Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the August 8th meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council. Would you please rise and join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have the roll call?
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Vice Mayor Slowey.
Present.
And Mayor Bruins.
Present.
Tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is capable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, and the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed caption and webcast at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replay is on Sunday, August 11th at 6:00 PM and again on Monday, August 12th at 9:00 AM on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is approval of agenda.
Okay. Do we have any questions on the agenda?
With approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carrie, thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is presentation number four, proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights recognizing Community Services Director Rhonda Sherman.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm Chris Boyd, City Manager, and it's a real pleasure to talk about, you know, a very special and longtime leader here in Citrus Heights. You know, I think great leaders in part are defined by the legacy that they leave, once they leave an organization, and the mark that they make for years to come. And, you know, Rhonda Sherman, our Community Services Director, will be retiring, so I'm going to talk about her for a minute before I turn it over to the mayor. Rhonda's here along with her husband, Simon, and, you know, we're going to be seeing her off, and it's a little difficult. A native of California, Rhonda received a Bachelor of Arts degree in urban studies from California State University, Northridge, and a Masters of Art, Arts in Urban Planning from the University of California, Los Angeles. Before coming to Citrus Heights, she worked in the city of West Hollywood for nine years. And when she came to Citrus Heights, she first was, she's one of our first employees. She was first hired as a contract employee for about a year or less, and then in 1999, she was hired as one of the first official city employees who held the position of Economic Development Coordinator. In 2001, she was appointed to the Economic Development Manager. In 2003, she maintained her position as Economic Development Manager while managing the operations of the city clerk's office. So, a lot of people don't know that Rhonda at one point was the city clerk. In October 2004, she was appointed to the Economic Development and City Information
at you, and the camera can pick you up.
Director and joined the executive team at that time.
I'm having Jeff hold this because this is the biggest proclamation I've ever seen.[225.12][225.12](Laughter) And that's too heavy for me.
In 2010, she was appointed to Community and Economic Development Director, where she
But I'm going to read it because I think every word is worthy of being heard.
was responsible for the oversight and management of long-range planning, building, housing, and economic development.
So, this is a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights honoring Rhonda Sherman on
And in 2017, you know, it was, I'm so grateful to this day that she really accepted my offer
the occasion of her retirement from the City of Citrus Heights. Whereas Rhonda Sherman began her career with the newly incorporated City of Citrus Heights
to really run two departments in the city.
in early 1998 as the Economic Development Coordinator, and during her tenure with the
She's so capable and has done such a fantastic job. She was appointed as the Community Services Director and tasked with managing both the
city, Rhonda has served as the Economic Development Manager, the Economic Development and City
General Services Department and the Community Economic Development Department, and did
Information Director, city clerk, and the Community and Economic Development Director.
a fabulous job. So, it's the council's role tonight to provide her with a proclamation.
In October 2017, she was appointed Community Services Director overseeing the General Services and Community and Economic Development Departments. And whereas eager to implement the economic development goals of the city, Rhonda worked
So, I'll turn it over to you, Mayor, but, you know, I just want to tell you on behalf of all the staff, I mean, we're going to miss her.
collaboratively with the Economic Development Strategy Task Force to develop the city's
She's been phenomenal. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. So, I'm going to ask the council to come down with me, and we'll do that all together. first-ever economic development strategy and action plan that outlined an approach and work plan that the city could undertake to strengthen and diversify its economy. And whereas Rhonda was instrumental in the creation and implementation of the city's first-ever community awareness promotion campaign that has generated a unique brand identity, solid roots, new growth, that embodies Citrus Heights' rich history and establishes the city as a hardy foundation for which new ventures can flourish. And whereas, as a result of Rhonda's innovative leadership, the purchase of the former Sylvan Middle School property was successfully coordinated. The property anchors one quadrant of Sylvan Corners and has long been recognized as a crucial economic and social focal point of the community. And whereas Rhonda played a crucial role in the beautification of Sylvan Corners and Auburn Boulevard, including removal of billboards, the undergrounding of utility lines, and in the development of Stock Ranch, including new retail office and residential development, as well as the Stock Ranch nature preserve. And whereas Rhonda's many accomplishments further include the formation of the Citrus Heights Collaborative, creation of the Sunrise Marketplace Property-Based Improvement District, and the city's 2008 Sunrise Marketplace Visioning Project, planning of the year-long celebrations for the city's 10-year and 20-year anniversaries, and overseeing construction of the City Hall Legacy mural. And whereas Rhonda has committed to working collaboratively with all city departments, identifying strategies to solve longstanding issues for the betterment of the Citrus Heights community and to further city council objectives. And whereas Rhonda has distinguished herself as perceptive, loyal, and passionate, a conscientious, dedicated public servant, and staunch community advocate, her innumerable contributions, fair administration of planning regulations, and invaluable guidance significantly and permanently enhance the evolution and expansion of the city as we now know it. And whereas for those who had the distinct good fortune to work alongside Rhonda Sherman, it is her heartfelt commitment to empower, motivate, and encourage while fostering a spirit of team and camaraderie that will forever remain the truest testament of her character, integrity, and humility, and will, after all is said and done, be her greatest legacy. Now, therefore, aren't you glad?[434.33][434.33](Laughter) Be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights is hereby commend Rhonda Sherman for her many contributions, steadfast dedication, and exceptional service, extending to her the sincerest gratitude and appreciation for all she has done for the city, this community, and all who live or can play here.[455.52][455.52](Laughs) I made it.[457.11][457.11](Laughter) And we witnessed this. So, you know, having read the formal proclamation, I have known Rhonda for all these years, and we have this little link because I, at one time in my life, also lived in West Hollywood many, many years ago. And, you know, after reading all this, I think we just kind of should close our doors and go home, you know? But you've become a good friend, too, Rhonda, and I can't imagine going forward without you, but we will. And I just know that you are entering in a phenomenal chapter of your life. And so, on behalf of the City Council, I want to tell you we love you and we wish you well. Would you like to say a few words? Okay. All right.[503.24][503.24](Laughter) My boy Freddie over here.
Right here? Right here? Okay. Okay, so, this is hopefully not going to be too hard, but I do have my Kleenex ready.[521.79][521.79](Laughter) Yeah, okay. So, I am so grateful for a challenging and rewarding 30-year career in local government. When I came to Citrus Heights, I never would have imagined the opportunities that were given to me to be my best self. A heartfelt thank you to City Manager Chris Boyd for supporting me and believing me, which has allowed me to end my career on a high note. Thank you. I had the privilege of working for the very first council with Bill Hughes as the mayor and the current council, my last council, with Jeannie Bruins as the mayor. Such great bookends. Thank you, council members, for always putting the best for the city above all. It's been my honor serving you and the community, and thank you for allowing me to make a difference in the everyday lives of the residents and businesses. What will stand out in my heart and mind as I look back at my time working for the city is my coworkers. Thank you to Rhonda Rivera and Ron Lawrence. What a great team it's been. I'm sorry for breaking up the band.[600.04][600.04](Laughter) I have worked with so many smart, passionate, caring, and hard-working people over the years. One of my greatest joys was watching the people I work with accomplish so much in both their professional and personal lives. Thank you to all my staff. You've made me a better boss and more importantly, a better person. And I will never forget you. Finally, I'd like to take my husband, Simon. Without Simon's love, support, and encouragement, I would not be standing here today. I did a little back-of-the-envelope calculation, and I've attended probably 430 and one-quarter council meetings, including today. And Simon was always there to greet me and give me a hug when I came home. Thank you. Again, I'm so grateful for my career and my time at Citrus Heights, and I thank you so much for this recognition. Thank you.[665.44][665.44](Applause)
So, I'll just say a couple of things. So, I've been here since the beginning on the Planning Commission and then on the City Council, and I have to say that this is only the second time that I've seen on this side of the street, police office, you know, the police department does a little different, but this is only the second time in that I've been here that we've actually put a diploma in a frame. So, you know you're doing good when we've actually spent the extra money on a frame.[705.73][705.73](Laughter) And for the record, the first one was when Henry retired, so. But Rhonda, I can honestly say in all these years, there's only been one time that I've disagreed with you. I won't go into that here, you know, and I think that's pretty good after 20-some years. I had the opportunity many years ago to travel to China with your husband. We had a great time. He did tell a few stories about you, but I'll leave those alone as well.[731.11][731.11](Laughter) But, you know, you hit it right on the head. It's the coworkers. Chris said it's the legacy. You will be missed, but your legacy's all over this town. So, you're going to retire. I heard your husband's going to keep working for a few more years, so, you know, good for you. Good planning on your part. But we'll miss you, but I know you're not going to be that far away. So, thank you.[754.23][754.23](Applause)
So, I just want to tell you I'm thoroughly enjoying forcing you into the spotlight because I know how much you don't like that. So, we're enjoying that part. You were here basically from the beginning, and I can say from my heart that I do not believe there's any other employee that has had more of an impact on Citrus Heights than you. We are not what we are today without you. So, thank you so much.[788.51][788.51](Applause)
Well, at the beginning of the proclamation, it shows how many positions you held, and I know you started small in at city clerk, and then someone would leave and we'd add their duties and responsibilities, and it just grew and grew and grew. You wore many hats, but you wore them well, and I echo Brett's comments. We are where we're at largely because of your leadership, and we're going to miss you. I'm going to miss you, and I wish you well on your future endeavors. Thank you.[825.25][825.25](Applause)
Rhonda, it's been a very short time working with you, but I remember the kind words that you gave me as a planning commissioner and the several binders you gave and said, "You don't have to read them all, but it's probably best if you, if you're familiar."[845.69][845.69](Laughter) And I remember asking a lot of questions, and you never once made me feel like I, like it wasn't appropriate, and I always appreciated that about you. And I can only imagine how your staff feels because I know you made me feel so welcomed, and you made me feel like I could really make a difference, and I hope that that spirit lives on with all of us in this community. I'm really going to miss you.[867.82][867.82](Applause)
So, we're going to take a few minutes to take a picture and send you home with a really nice plant.[883.23][883.23](Laughter) Yeah. Guess you want to join us just?
Yeah.
No, that's too big. Simon, do you want to join us for a picture?
Yeah. You guys take center stage.
Where is Simon?
Right there, Stan.
One, two, three.
Are we supposed to jump in here or something?[894.23][894.23](Laughter)
Okay. Let's carry on as best we can. And our next item, please.
The next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
Okay, we'll start with Ms. Portia Middleton.
Okay, so, I was able to attend the grand refreshing reopening of the Sylvan Library, and it was amazing. I got to tour around and look around again, and just seeing all the people out there was, was really awesome to just be a part of that and to feel the energy and to meet all the friends of the library, which I wasn't really very familiar with. Also, I brought my children out to National Night Out, and we went around and saw all the different neighborhoods, and they really enjoyed it. They've ate far too much ice cream and cookies and chips and things of that sort, and had a really good time talking with my fellow colleagues and just, you know, enjoying our community.
Okay. Steve Miller.
Well, Sylvan Library, ditto. National Night Out, that was really great to get out in our community. I can't remember how many events there were, like 15. I can only get to five or six, but I was good. I only had one hot dog all night. The STA today, nothing really earth-shattering. We had an update on a mid-year budget, and everything's trending a little ahead as far as revenue goes, sales tax revenue. So, that's, that's the good news, and that's it for me.
Thank you. Brett, Daniel.
Yeah, thank you. So, yep, got to go out to the opening of the library, the grand opening, and it was a wonderful time. If you haven't gotten there, please get there. And if you've had a negative experience in the past with maybe the surrounding area, please don't let that keep you from going to the library. We need to make sure that we don't allow that to happen and that we don't not go to these places because of any concerns like that. So, please go, and if you do have any issues, please just talk to the librarian about them because they're very serious about keeping it a very positive experience, and so, please do that. This coming Saturday, I don't know if you have any further information on it. I think it's, is it Hot Dog Spites this Saturday?
Eleven to two.
What time?
Eleven to two.
Eleven to two at Rush Park, right? And I think I went to that last year if I'm remembering right. It's a very good time. So, if you've got some free time on your hands Saturday, please take the opportunity to go out there and enjoy a good family event. That's it.
Jeff Slowey.
Thank you. So, back on the first SECOG met, and we're going through our RENA allocations. So, RENA is Regional Housing Needs Assessment, and that's where all jurisdictions throughout California via the state get assigned their numbers of housing units that they're supposed to build. And in particular, within that are the low, low income and low to moderate income. Those are the important ones that the state cares about. As you've heard, the current governor, he says there's not enough units, which is true. You know, when I take a look at Citrus Heights, we're kind of built out, but at the same time, we have, you know, Mitchell Farms coming. The good news, and I know Rhonda's leaving right at the beginning of this, but Colleen McDuffie will carry us through the numbers I think are set to be distributed about a year from now. But let's just take as an example, you know, we get assigned 500 units. Well, you can look around the city. There's no way we could, you know, really build 500 units. So, it's always a little dicey during this time when we get those numbers because the last thing we want is to get numbers of that. Realistically, we can't build. Now, at the same time, you're not required to build them, right? We're not developers, so we can't make somebody go out and build them. But as a city, we have to set policy that says you have areas where these properties can go. So, typically what that means, if you look at our city, and again, it's not 500, but I'm just using that. If they said 500, the only way to get there would be to take parcels that maybe are zoned one to four today and bump them up to 20, which, you know, that, that's not the greatest thing either. So, the good news is so far, we're looking good. It doesn't look like we're going to get a, you know, astronomically high number, and hopefully, when it's said and done, the current zoning would be allowed, would allow for enough units to be built, again, assuming one developer, you know, can afford to and wants to develop them. So, you know, the penalty for not having the space, if you will, once you get these numbers, is you can get cut out of state grants. Newport Beach is currently actually getting sued by the state because they have no affordable or low-to-moderate-income housing down there. Kind of makes sense with the cost of land down there. But you can put a lot of things in jeopardy if you get your RENA numbers and you don't have a policy that says, you know, assuming somebody wanted to, here's where they could go. So, the good news is I, you know, I don't think we're going to have to get to that point with these numbers, but again, we won't know for about a year. Portia mentioned the library. Everybody mentioned the National Night Out. Got to spend it with the mayor and the chief. I have to say, this year in particular was really good to get out, especially with what's going on all across the country, with what's going on last weekend. It's really good to see the community interacting with our first responders, you know, not just the CHPD, but FIRE was out and others were out. So, it was good to see. Earlier today, Portia and myself met with the SAC Metro Fire in our quarterly two-by-two. They gave us some numbers, and I just wanted to read them out here to give you an idea, you know, just how busy SAC Metro is. And two numbers stood out. So, and this is from January 1st through June 30th. So, in the whole territory Metro Fire covers, which is all of the county, Rancho, Elk Grove, us, they do not, I think the only part of SAC County they don't cover is SAC City and Folsom, but for their entire area, they had 33,451 medical calls, so i.e. ambulance or paramedics. Of those 33,000, 3,931 of those were in Citrus Heights. And then from a motor vehicle accident just in Citrus Heights in the first six months, there were 260 that they were called out on. So, the good news is it's a slight drop from the last numbers we saw, but still, that's, that's a lot of poor driving, 260 accidents in six months. So, again, they're very busy. I think, you know, you see them, you need to thank them. I think one of the things that we all commented on is we actually have a plan checker here at City Hall from SAC Metro Fire. So, you know, in the past, if you brought plans in here after we did them, we'd have to send them down to them, which is down at Mather. Again, you know, not only just getting them there, but they were doing the whole county. The one that's here at Citrus Heights, three days a week, all she does is do Citrus Heights plan check while she's here three days a week. And the nice thing is you can actually come in, whether your plans are complete or not, and ask a question, and actually talk to the person who's going to be approving them or denying them, which you don't get the opportunity to do too much. So, you know, a big shout-out to SAC Metro Fire for all that they do and for continuing to support our city. So, with that, I'm done.
Thank you. And I have not had a regional board meeting since our last meeting. Regional Sanders meet till next week. And the other thing, two things I was going to report out on, National Night Out, which was a lot of fun, and the Hot Dog Spites, which is coming up Saturday, as been mentioned. Just mentioned with Hot Dog Spites, they always have a great car show with it, food trucks, and a lot of activities for the kids. So, I hope to see you there, and that's all I have to report. And next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any item on the agenda during the council's consideration of the item. If you wish to address the council during the meeting, fill out a speaker identification sheet and give it to myself. When you're called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Normally, speakers are limited to five minutes each, with 30 minutes being allowed for all comments, and any public comments beyond the initial 30 minutes may be heard at the conclusion of the agenda, and the mayor has the discretion to lengthen or shorten the allotted times.
Okay, thank you. We have only two speaker sheets tonight, so if anyone else wants to speak, now would be the time to get your sheet and take it over to our city clerk. But we'll start with Mr. Forrest Allen.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and City Council. I'm a longtime resident of Citrus Heights since '73, and I live in Sylvan Corners area. And the subject is, well, I've got two of them in reality to bring to the public. The first one is I got hacked by the Republic Company, our waste management people. Well, not really by them, but they let somebody hack me on my bill. And this started last year, last July, and I received a bill. I had my credit card for deduction all the time since I started with them. So, but I had billing by mail. So, in July of last year, I got a bill, and it said it was late, plus I owed $300, and normally my bill is 40-something per month, and a late fee. And so, I immediately called the Rancho office, and they got ahold of me, and we got together online, and the guy says, and I got a picture of my account, as you see, and right above your name, this has a link, and he says, "Click on that link." So, I did, and it had somebody in, in Salt Lake City. He says, "Did you receive anything or a bill, or do you know anybody, or do you have a business or anything?" I said, "No." So, he said, "That's in a different district. This is the western district, and that's mountain district," or whatever. So, he gives me the 800 number. I get ahold of them and work with the billing people there, and they in turn go to the IT people. And after an hour or so, they come back and said, "Well, we found, what happened is somebody linked your bill with an email, my email." And I thought that was kind of odd, but then I got their word from the IT people and said that they got it all cleared up. Fine, I went back and got my regular account because I had to close my regular account here. And so, December came around, same thing. And so, I was late, and it was a late fee and so on. be the time to get your sheet and take it over to our city clerk. But we'll start with Mr. Forrest Allen.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and City Council. I'm a longtime resident of Citrus Heights since '73, and I live in Sylvan Corners area. And the subject is, well, I've got two of them in reality to bring to the public. The first one is I got hacked by the Republic Company, our waste management people. Well, not really by them, but they let somebody hack me on my bill. And this started last year, last July. And I received a bill. I had my credit card for deduction all the time since I started with them. So, but I had billing by mail. So in July of last year, I got a bill, and it said it was late, plus I owed $300. And normally, my bill is 40-something per month, and a late fee. And so I immediately called the Rancho office, and they got ahold of me, and we got together online. And the guy says, and I got a picture of my account, as you see. And right above your name, this has a link. And he says, click on that link. So I did. And it had somebody in Salt Lake City. He says, did you receive anything or a bill, or do you know anybody, or do you have a business or anything? I said, no. So he said, that's in a different district. This is the Western District, and that's Mountain District or whatever. So he gives me the 800 number. I get ahold of them and work with the billing people there, and they in turn go to the IT people. And after an hour or so, they come back and said, well, we found, what happened is somebody linked your bill with an email, my email. And I thought that was kind of odd, but then I got their word from the IT people and said that they got it all cleared up. Fine, I went back and got my regular account because I had to close my regular account here. And so December came around, same thing. And so I was late, and it was a late fee and so on. And I mentioned that to Mary Poole. She says, well, I know somebody over there. She says, I'll see if I can help you. So I gave it a few months, and by March of this year, it came around again, repeat. So I get ahold of Salt Lake City, and they give me the okay, you know, that's all been deleted, and nothing's going to happen. Well, let's see. So in June rolls around, and I really got alarmed about it. So I finally got a contact of the general manager in Rancho and told him that there had to be something done, or else I would have to take it to corporate level. So he got ahold of the manager in Salt Lake City, and they went around and around. And so to clear this whole thing up, the people in billing in Salt Lake City said, we have to make sure that you actually pay the bill for those two months. I said, okay. And she says, well, can you, is it okay to use your card that you've got on file? I said, yeah. I don't want to pay the late fee, though. She says, okay. So she says, what's your email address? And it took me back, and I said, wait a minute. You're saying that they connected me, someone else connected me, now you're using my email to pay my bill?
Forrest, just want to let you know, your time is almost up, so.
Oh, okay. So in the review, I took my credit card off, so I don't have, I got billing through the mail, and I pay them through my credit union. But in doing so, one last thing. Last page, I asked them, what was the fee of $2.25? They said, that's the late fee for Citrus Heights, and everybody pays that. And so what I'm thinking is, where is that? That should be transparent to the residents of Citrus Heights. So I took an average of 50,000 people, times 25, times nine months of billing, came close to $1 million. So I know we are hazardous waste. We take it to the landfill or the transfer station. But nobody, the city doesn't show the residents that this money is coming in and where it's going back out to if you are paying the county that many. So I would like to have that transparent for the rest of the community in Citrus Heights.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you very much. So it looks as though you got your situation resolved with Republic based on the invoices you gave us.
I did it on my part, but I just took the credit card offline.
Right, but they.
All they do is send me a bill by mail. I put it in e-billing by my Safe Credit Union.
But my point is, is that you got your, you got your, all those charges were removed from your account?
Yeah.
The fraudulent ones?
But.
Okay.
But the bad part is, they went through my email, and they, the very first time, they said it was from an app that I had on my cellphone.
Well, it's good to know.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
So you can be hacked a lot of different ways.
Appreciate you taking the time to educate us and bringing it forward. Okay, our next speaker is Kathy Morris.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I actually just want to say thank you. I've heard several times this evening you talk about the National Night Out. We had National Night Out. Mayor, Councilman Slowey, excuse me, Councilman Miller, were there at ours, and I'm sure you all at others. It was a wonderful time to meet people, and we really, really appreciate the fact that you showed up. Our neighborhoods get together sometimes, sometimes we don't, but this is a good time to get together. We did. It was our first time for Area 7, 8, and it won't be the last. It's very successful, and thank you for being there. Thank you for supporting your neighbors.
Thank you. And Kathy, before you sit down, you guys put on a really nice event, and I thought it was really cool that you combined it with another neighborhood association, because the neighborhood association is kind of their own little silos, you know, as they take care of their own part of the Citrus Heights. So to be able to combine that with another group was.
Area four.
Four. I always get those numbers mixed up. So that you guys could interact too with people that you don't necessarily normally see. That was really nice.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
Thank you for being there.
That is all I have in the way of speaker sheets, so we'll go on to the next item, please.
The next item is consent calendar items five, six, seven, and eight.
Do we have any questions on consent?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Next item, please.
The next item is public hearing number nine. The subject is Affordable Housing Zoning Code Update, and the recommendation is to introduce for a first reading and waive the reading of the entire ordinance, an ordinance amending Chapter 106.32 of the zoning code in regard to affordable housing incentives.
Good evening, Council. Allison Bermudez is here with the Planning Division, here tonight with the zoning code amendment for your review and approval. What we have tonight is a comprehensive update of our Affordable Housing section. As you know, as was mentioned earlier, affordable housing has been a topic at the legislature over the past few years. Been several laws that have been enacted, so we're kind of playing catch-up in our zoning code. I think we're catching up with eight laws that have been passed, so getting our code up to date. And as you know, it's required to be consistent with state law. Zoning code was, the amendments were proposed before the Planning Commission in June. They have reviewed them and are recommending your approval. The Affordable Housing and Density Bonus section of, is very important in our role of planning for our city. Many features of our state law that we use in our planning documents is around housing. Our housing element of the general plan focuses quite a bit on housing, including affordable housing. We maintain a vacant land inventory for those RENA numbers that Jeff spoke of earlier. There are streamlining processes that are in place to encourage housing, especially for specialized housing. And then our zoning code is consistency with those laws. Legislation over the past few years has changed some key parts of affordable housing. The affordability, as we know it, that's when a developer enters into an agreement with us to maintain affordable units. Used to be 30 years. It's now 55 years. The state has enacted additional specialized housing types, so we're familiar with senior housing, but now there's student housing and all different kinds now that they have incorporated into the affordable housing sections. There's incentives now offered for commercial developers that are including affordable housing as part of their development. We are under stricter application processing timelines for streamlining of the applications. And then they also have incorporated parking standards into the housing laws. So qualified affordable projects, or is when this developer agrees to develop a project and will enter into an agreement with us that the units remain affordable for that 55-year period of time. And in order, and to do that and to encourage that, then they are given certain areas of development that they can use to promote that. So they get what we call incentives, so they can get reduced setbacks, they can get extra heights on building, they can reduce open space, they get the reduced parking, and then they also get a density bonus, which allows the development of more units. And these are all part of state law that, as projects come through, using this that we must allow. So just one quick example of how this would impact a project. A 20-unit multifamily project that's going to offer 54 bedrooms on a one-acre vacant parcel with our multifamily zoning, which we call RD 20. And the developer decides to develop that property, but they tell us they're going to, 20% of those units they develop will be dedicated to what we call very low income. So that's a qualifier of income level. So 20% of the units they develop would be for very low income, and they would say that would be for 55 years. So that project develops with these laws. They would get a 35% increase in density due to that agreement that 20% of those units would be for very low income. So the RD 20 zone would allow 20 units. So they would get this increased density. So the 20-unit development would now become 27 units, and six of those then being committed to this very low income level. With that 20% to very low income, they would also be entitled to three incentives, and these are development standards that they could reduce or increase, no matter, depending on what, the way you look at it, maybe they need a reduced setback, they need extra height. They'd be entitled to three of those incentives. And then in addition, they can reduce the parking. So standard zoning would typically require a 54-bedroom complex to provide 67 parking spaces, one per bedroom, and then guest parking, which would be the 67. And with these laws enacted, that would drop to 27 spaces, would be required, just a half a space per bedroom. So I just wanted to run through that real quick to give you an example of these types of incentives and what happens through this development. And this has all been incorporated into the zoning code as required through these laws that have been enacted over the past couple of years.
That's it for mine, and the motions are there on the screen. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So Allison, just to be clear, so because this is state law, we're just updating our code to incorporate, and we really don't have a choice here?
Correct. These are all things mandated by state law. These are nothing additional, or we, have we put into it? It's all state mandated.
Okay. And this is the public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing for any public comment. If you'd like to address this issue, please come forward now. Okay, then I will close the public comment, and we can move along. I'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
We have some discussion still?
Oh, so sorry.
There's no discussion.
No.
I'll move it, but.
Wait, 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 let's go ahead.
Can you go back to the density bonus? So on the 20 units, are you saying that those units don't have to be very low income? It's the bonus that has to be very low income, the six units?
Six units of the 27.
So the answer is just the six, just the bonus?
You could look at, I mean, I would look at that way.
The other ones would not have to be that.
Like Sunrise Point Project, if you remember that from last year, they didn't actually request the density bonus, but they still committed some units to affordability. So the application could not request density, but if they did, then it would be either the units that are dense, that are, I mean, that are additional, or if they're not, they would still have to commit, whether they take the density or not.
And if the developer basically opts for the density bonus, are you saying that we're not allowed to deny it?
Correct.
And is the developer required to put in for the density bonus if he develops to a certain level?
They are not. As Sunrise Point chose not to take the density bonus, they developed 47 units, which was allowed by traditional zoning. They did not take the density bonus, but they could have.
And then in this whole thing that we're doing now, does it have a possible negative impact on what we may or may not see at the old Sylvan School property?
It's hard to say, but if it was, if it came in as an affordable project, it could be incorporated into it. This could be any place in our jurisdiction that was coming in for housing.
Okay, thank you.
And then just to reiterate, these are catching up through, everything through 2018? As you can imagine, there's probably additional coming down the pipeline.
I can imagine.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else have any questions or comments? Sorry, didn't mean to step on you there. Okay?
Move approval.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this item. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
And my motion was for both items, SEQA and the first reading of attachment one, if that's okay from the city attorney? Okay.
Oh, they're all, they're both in item nine, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear that I was motioning both of them at the same time.
Right. Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor for both parts of that item. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, it carries. Thanks very much, Ally. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing, item number, and item numbers 10, 11, and 12 for the Citrus Heights Lighting Assessment District assessments and the Landscape Maintenance Assessment Districts for 9701, 9801, 9802, and 0301 will all be presented together, and then council will be asked to approve the resolutions individually.
Okay. Good evening, Stu.
Mayor, members of the council, I am Stu Hodgkins, your city engineer. The items before you tonight are the second step in the process for updating our annual assessments. Two weeks ago, you took the actions to initiate proceedings and adopt resolutions of intention for each of the city's five landscape districts and the lighting district. At that time, you set tonight as the date for the public hearing and for your opportunity to take action to levy assessments for fiscal year 1920. The first item before you is item 10. What I do want to speak about on the lighting district, I provided to you an updated exhibit. We received at the last minute, in the last two days, updated information from our assessment consultant that assists us with this, based on updated information they received from Sacramento County. There's been some slight changes in the amount of the assessment, and as a result, the shortfall for the district has changed. I wanted to provide that to you. We, I signed a revised engineer's report today that incorporates these figures into it. If you have any questions on that, I'll move forward. The remainder of the items before you tonight are for landscape assessment districts, 9701, the four zones there, 9801, 9802, and 0301. We would ask that you, in each case, were levying the assessments at the levels we had previously. We're not recommending any increases or changes this year, and ask that you consider public comment and then move forward with the resolutions. And we have one resolution for each district, a little less than last time.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it again, for these four items. Anybody want to come forward and speak to them? If not, I will close the public hearing. Thank you. Okay.
Some questions?
Yes, go ahead.
Stu, on the, on the lighting district, from 1718 to 1819, there was a approximately 50% bump on the contract maintenance cost. Do you happen to know what caused that bump?
On Schedule 3, is that what you're looking at, Brett?
Yep. This, I believe, and I apologize, Leslie could not be here this evening, and she is the most knowledgeable on the district. We have had, we have gradual increases in our contract service costs for all of our districts, including our lighting district as well. And I would assume that there's a portion of that. In addition, there are also unforeseen costs that come along with that contract for knockdowns and things of that nature that add into those contract services.
Okay, it just seems like such a large bump, and then we're basically proposing the same about as we had last year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, these are beyond our control. These are people knocking down our poles, signs, through traffic accidents, correct? And so when you're making.
Some of the increases associated with unforeseens, that is for sure. We do have annual increases in our regular monthly maintenance costs as well, though. And we have done a great deal over the years. Dennis Dunn, Leslie's predecessor, and Leslie as well, have really focused on bringing these costs down on an annual basis. As you all know, we've been focused. As you all know, we've been focused on our LED retrofit program to bring down our actual electrical costs, and it does actually bring down our maintenance costs because they last much longer than traditional lighting. So, with that in regard, that's one of our issues with this district. Our shortfall continues to increase because our hands are a little bit tied, as we discussed at your last session. With Prop 218, the process of going forward with an increase is fairly substantial.
And then, on the lighting district, am I correct, everybody pays for the lighting district per parcel, per landowner?
Yes, there are two types of lights, and everybody across the city pays, depending upon, you know, safety lights are citywide benefit, everybody pays an equal amount. And then parcels receiving direct benefit from standard streetlights pay an appropriate amount.
And so, if you don't have streetlights in your neighborhood, you're not paying that fee, correct?
You pay for the safety light fee, but not the streetlight fee.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Jeff?
I have a request, and I don't, I don't know if you can do this, Stuart. We speak of landscape maintenance district zones 1, 2, 3, where are these, what are these? I think it'd be helpful for the public to...
Just in case. So, this, I put this map together, it's kind of a composite of a couple of others, and I apologize because they're kind of jumbled around. I'm going to start over in the west. We have 9701 Zone 3, which is off of Werner, way over on the west side of the city. The next one, almost due east from that, is 9802 Zone 1. For us, that is the area commonly known as Sorensen Ranch, right off of Van Maron. Just north of that is 9701 Zone 1, and that is, oh...
Is that by Misty Creek?
Yeah, just south of Misty Creek, that area in there. I truly drawn a blank on the street that goes back in there, kind of meanders through and comes into the backside of the Van Maron parcels to the south. I'm going to drop down, 9801 is just north of City Hall here. It's the properties off of Stock Ranch Road. 0301 Zone 2 and 0301 Zone 1 are part of the Stock Ranch project. Zone 1 is the commercial properties fronting Auburn Boulevard. Zone 2 is the residential parcels just north of the Roundabout here. Going straight north from that, 9802 Zone 2 is the Autumn Wood Development, the old woodlot many people are familiar with. 9802 Zone 3, our newest zone, is the Watt Community Subdivision Mariposa Creek, which is coming online this year, right off of Antelope Road. Just to its east, we have 9701 Zone 2 off of Old Auburn Road, Wickham Drive, that area just east of Mariposa. And then our final Zone 4, 9701 Zone 4, is the area off of Oak Avenue, right near the eastern boundary of the city.
And these are all landscaped areas out in front of subdivisions? Typically, I know we have one commercial one, that the city takes care of for the whole subdivision?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay. All right, thank you, Steve. Portia, do you have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
I will make a motion to move forward, District 9701, Zones 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Give a second.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve or move forward. 9701 Zones 1 through 4. Did we skip one? No, we didn't.
Item 11, yeah, we haven't done item 10.
Yeah, we didn't do 10 yet. So, Jeff, are you on 11?
I'm going to speak up very quickly. I put these in the same order. We had them on your agenda last time, and I realize the lighting district is the last, item number five, and that is item 10 on your agenda tonight. I apologize.
Okay, so let's take item number 10 on the agenda first, which is the lighting assessment.
And that's number five on this list.
Right.
So moved.
Okay, and a second still?
So seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve those lighting assessment district levies for this year. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Restate my previous motion, 9701 Zones 1 through 4.
Okay. Motion, and do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for item 11. Assessment Districts 9701 Zones 1 through 4, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Move assessment District 9801.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second? Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to approve District 9801, 02, and 0301. All in favor say aye. Aye.
9801 was the motion.
I'm sorry, what?
They're on this calendar like this.
Did I read it wrong?
You did, because that's the next one.
Oh, oh, sorry. Because my...
That's right, our city attorney would have...
Yeah, my, my, my agenda didn't, okay, sorry. So...
Right here.
We're on 11 or 12?
We're on 12 now.
12, okay. Okay, Districts 9801-01, 98-02. Or are we taking each of these separately, too?
No, just the, there'd be, there should be a total of five motions. You've already done number five, and then you did number one.
Okay, so number 12 is all together?
No.
No, they're separately.
Yeah, so Genie.
Okay, got it. So, okay, so we're going to adopt...
9801.
9801.
Staff's recommendation, that's what we...
Staff's recommendation, okay. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Sorry for the confusion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now...
Now, 9801 Zones 1 through 3. And I'm sorry, 9802 Zones 1 through 3.
I think it's Jeff messing these motions.
I'm trying really hard to mess you up, and I'm doing a good job.
Okay, motion and a second on the floor for 9802 Zones 1, 2, and 3. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That carries.
And lastly, Assessment District 0301 Zones 1 and 2.
Second.
Motion and a second on the floor to approve staff's recommendation on Assessment District 0301, Stock Ranch Zones 1 and 2. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It carries. I'm so glad we only do this once a year, honestly.
Good job.
All right, thank you, Stu. All right, I think that takes care of that. That closes our public hearings. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 13, the Substance Park Facilities Impact Fee Fund Request, Rush Community Park Improvements. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the use of $90,000 in park facilities impact fee funds for improvements to Rush Community Park.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Bruins, Vice Mayor Slowly, Stephanie Cotter. I am the Housing and Human Services Program Coordinator with the city, and this is Mr. Dave Mitchell. He is our district administrator.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council.
District Administrator for the Sunrise Recreation and Park District. So, we're here tonight to talk about a request from the Park District for some park facility impact fees, and I will go over the process for the park impact fees, and then Mr. Mitchell will go over the project and what it entails. So, the city collects a park facilities impact fee on new development projects, and the revenue that's collected can be used to finance improvements or development of park and recreation facilities within the city of Citrus Heights. The district can submit a request to the city for funds, because the city holds the funds in our accounts, and there is a process outlined in the memorandum of understanding between the city and the district, and it entails that a committee comprised of city representatives and representatives from the district meet to review the request, and then after they review the request, their recommendation is sent to the full city council for a vote. So, just a brief overview of the request. The district is requesting a total of $90,000. $86,000 of this is for playground equipment at Rush Community Park over by the covered picnic area, and $4,000 of it is for security cameras, and this is part of a previous project that is, this is the final stage to complete it.
Is that also at Rush Park or is that another location?
Yes, thank you. It is also at Rush Park. A little bit of a background on the project. In February 2019, the district received a grant from Republic Services to make improvements to Rush Park. Although they did get a really nice grant from Republic, it wasn't enough to cover the entire project, so the district was looking for additional funding partners, and they came to the city and requested some community development block grant funding, and this is an eligible project under that funding source. And the city's Quality of Life Committee met and approved that allocation in May 2019. And then, this last July, the district submitted the request for the park facility impact fee, and this is the last piece of the puzzle to close the funding gap for the project. These are some pictures of the existing conditions. This is the existing play structure and the swing set. So, the staff level review of the funding request just includes a quick review to make sure that it meets all of the components of the memorandum of understanding, and it's consistent with the use of the funding source. So, we reviewed the project and found that it is consistent. It'll make improvements to a park located within the city of Citrus Heights. It will provide a benefit to the Citrus Heights community. In fact, it's the largest park in Citrus Heights, and it's the most highly used, and the project is also listed within the district's master plan. So, as part of the process, the committee of district and city representatives did meet to discuss this funding request, and it includes two board members from the Park District and two city council members, and the committee did recommend approving the $90,000 in park facilities impact fee funds for these improvements to Rush Community Park. So, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Mitchell to go over the site plan, and then you can ask any questions, and we'll move on from there.
Good evening again. Dave Mitchell, district administrator with Sunrise Recreation and Park District. The total funding package for this plan is $385,000. The playground replacement is at Rush Park. It's the playground right next to the covered picnic area. The original playground, you just saw a couple of pictures of it. We estimate that it was installed about 1991, is what we, to the best of our ability that we can remember. And so, the total project right now is 385,000. So, tonight, we're hoping and requesting 86,000 of park impact fees. In addition to that, Stephanie talked about the $60,000 grant, the, from Republic Services, the $100,000 of CDVG funding. Also, the Sunrise Recreation and Park District's board has put in $100,000 of its general fund and has allocated 39,000 of, in lieu fees for this project to put together a nice package. When we went out to talk with the community about the playgrounds, we did an RFQ. We had nine different playground manufacturers submit proposals, and we received 14 different options. And through those 14 different options, we narrowed them down through five different community outreaches, where we had well over 400 people give a variety of opinions. The playground that you see in front, even the schematic, won each one of the community outreaches. It was the number one vote getter each time. The biggest one that we had was about 250 people. We were right down on our pool deck and did our swim team, synchro team, and all the parents that come with that, and that was about 250 votes there. So, the playground right now, it has basically two circles that I'm sure you're very familiar with, and you can see that this is more of an oval-shaped footprint, so the whole center of the, of the cement area, and there's a couple of benches, and there's all being removed. So, the footprint of the playground is, and the playground itself is going to be about twice the size. So, here's the, the new proposed playground that we're going to be installing. From the left-hand side, it's a zero-entry playground where children, youngsters of all ages can enter, and as you enter from the left, obviously you can enter from anywhere you like, but for tonight's presentation, when you enter from the left and as you move towards the right, you can see it gets more difficult, more challenging as you go through the playground. The surfacing underneath the playground is poor in place. It's the rubberized surface that's underneath the playground in this particular area, and this is the backside view of the main playground that's here. Once again, has poor in place underneath this. We are remaining, we will be keeping swings in the playground, and that was at the end of the footprint. So, we're going, a couple of lap belts that are similar to what is already there, and then a couple more of the modern-type swing sets for the younger generations. The project timeline is, we're hoping to get underway September 23 through October 13 is the demolition. My crews will be doing all the demolition of the area. November 9 is a volunteer work day. Republic Services, through their foundation grant, they have a very large employee base that's coming out, and they'll be doing a workday all through Rush Park with a whole variety of services. And then the installation of the new playground, they start work on October 14, and they'll be finished by, basically, right before Thanksgiving. So, we're really, really excited and pleased to bring this project forward, and I think at this point, Steph and I are here for any questions you might have.
Okay, questions?
No, no questions, but just a comment. Genie and I did meet with Dave and others from the Park District and the city. Anybody who has kids, this particular playground that's being replaced is always in use, always packed, to make it bigger and better. I mean, to me, that's what park impact fees are for, so I fully support it.
Thank you, me too. Yes, yes, father of a young child.
Father of two-year-old here, whose, whose wife takes baby to a park almost every day, it seems like. Two of the main issues that come into play when mainly my wife takes the baby and her five or six moms take their children to the park, number one is they, they want to feel safe. And I got to be blunt, and you know it, that's kind of missing from the park and, and from several parks throughout Citrus Heights, and unfortunately, they go to outer, outer-area parks most of the time. One of the things that I would like you to think about, it's too late for right now, but maybe in the near future hopefully, is considering fencing in the park area. Whenever they go to the park, we hear these horror stories about needles being found and stuff like that. Now, we're putting in structures which are not going to have complete visibility. I mean, I love this park setup. It looks beautiful. My kid's going to go crazy here, but you're going to have slides that go up that are going to have tunnels to them. There's no way I'm going to be able to know whether there's anything in that tunnel and stuff like that, and we just have evil people in the world that like to leave things behind for children. And so, just something to think about, maybe hopefully in the future, that is there a way for us to enclose this area, because we've already been told we can't enclose the park, we can't shut out, you know, shut people out of the park? And so, is there a way to make it safer for the kids, and maybe the parents feel a little bit better at ease if it's a secure type facility? It's terrible that we would have to maybe think along those lines, but maybe it's a reality that in one way of making areas safer. And then the other thing is, it's too hot to go to the park today, honey. We can't go to the park because the structure's on fire, literally. You don't want to touch it, and, and with this material, that's a little bit better, but still, in, you know, in our area, you know, when we get up into our summer days, if you're not there, you know, like in the morning, you're not going to go there in the afternoon. And I had the, the privilege of going out to North Natomas Park the other day, and they had that huge canopy over their play area, and I was like, wow, you know, wow. And I got to imagine that's expensive. And so, if that's something that we can think about, too, maybe down the line, and this is huge, you know, we'd have to maybe even think about several different canopies that overlap or something like that, but that's the other consideration, you know? Can't go to the park today, or can't go to the park right now because it's too hot. So, if maybe we can think about that in the future, those are what I think would help with putting us parents at ease about taking our kids to the park, because the saddest thing for me will be for you to build this beautiful thing, and nobody's coming over. Nobody's showing up, and I don't think that's going to happen, but it would just be very sad. And I love the flooring surface you went with. I don't understand why anybody builds a park and puts chunks of wood for kids to play in. I hate that, so thank you for going with this surface, too.
Thank you. Yeah, very accurate comments, thank you for that. The, what we're trying to do is change that end of the park, and so, both of the projects tonight, the replacement of the playground to bring... to bring more park users into that end of the park. The security cameras, they actually went up today. So all of us have been waiting for the security cameras. They did go up today, actually, on a smud pole. And so those security cameras, where they'll be live here in about a week, they'll get a direct feed right into CHPD dispatch. So, and then there's a few other things that we're working on in that area to bolster positive behavior in that area of the parks. So to really work on the concerns that you're bringing up. The other one is the heat. We go, like for all the colors of the playground, we have heat temperature for every single color and every single slide material out there, and we always do our best to pick the, the ones that don't hold as much heat. And we are starting to put more shades over the parks. This one, just couldn't quite figure out how to get the budget together for it on the, at this point. But it does have a very nice tree canopy there, but thank you for your comments.
Aren't the, aren't the materials also different? I mean, they're, they're more-
It helps.
They address these concerns, you know, they're, they're cooler materials that the, that the structure's made out of. I remember back in the day when it was all metal, you know, nothing's hotter than metal.
Right.
So, I mean, they look like they're, they're more tolerant, I mean, or they mitigate the heat to some degree.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Okay, well, it was a fun project to work on, on the committee level, and this is what the park impact fees are for, you know, for projects like this. And so I'm happy to have this before us tonight, and unless there are any other questions, we can-
Move approval.
Second?
Great, great. We have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. You got your new playground equipment, Dave? Welcome. Next item, please.
The next item is department reports, and there are none. The next item is city manager items.
Yes, council, just one brief item. So there's no agenda item scheduled for the August 22nd council meeting, so staff's recommendation that we, we cancel that meeting.
Oh, darn.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the good of the order?
Yes.
Yes, Brett?
Can we have the, the gentleman, who I believe is a Boy Scout, step up to the mic and tell us why he's here, who he is, where he's from?
He's like, bummer.
He thought you were going to slip out of here, didn't you?
My name is Jen Owens, and I'm a Life Scout in Troop 1 in Roosevelt. And I'm working on getting my community and, sorry, citizenship in the community mayor badge, and I need to go to the city council meeting. So I went to my neighborhood council in Citrus Heights, and I'm working on getting my eagle. I'm actually working with the guys on, with my eagle project of repainting the ballards and the fire hydrants and, you know, the safety poles.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Keep working for your eagle, it will help you down the road, you'd be surprised, so keep doing it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, introducing yourself. All right. Having no other people to introduce, we are standing adjourned.